I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Pillar, would you please lead us in a prayer?
Come on, please, follow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank and praise you for the moisture that you've provided for us, albeit it causes problems at times, we thank you for the gift of it. We pray that you watch over us this evening as we go about the business of this city, that it may be pleasing to you. And we thank and praise you for all the gifts you give us, in your name we pray, amen.
Thank you. Okay, agreed in approval of Minister November 7th, please.
Motion to approve and suspend, are you?
Motion by Hack.
Second.
Second by Weidrich, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, proposed. Thank you. Minutes are approved. Okay, approve the agenda, any changes or additions to the agenda?
There's two changes that I have added since the consent out.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Okay, motion by Pillar. Second. Second by Stern, discussion. All in favor of approving this agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. 5A, engineers report. Welcome.
All right, I got a construction update for you guys here for the water project. We stopped the weekly construction meetings now, much all the coordination work is done. We have a couple miscellaneous items that the contractors will take care of when the weather clears up here. So we are no longer having those. The tank is completed, it's in use, we did have those couple leaks when it turned on. There's one remaining that's gonna be fixed in the spring. We were able to isolate the section and just leave it off for the winter, because that will require some asphalt work on that one. And those invoices are being submitted to the State Water Commission for the 60% cost share, so it'll be covered under that. And then currently, right now, we're working to get quotes on the bottling. One of them could have banned those vaults outside the water treatment plant. There's a couple bell vaults that, right now, there's nothing over top of them. I think it's just a wood plate.
There's plywood over the one.
Yeah, plywood over one of them. So if they want to take that fence down around there, those would be open to the public. So just have Tan come in and fill them or remove them or something, so we can cover those up. And then the removal of the fence around the clear well, that was initially in the contract, and then we changed that out with the clear well. So I talked to Angelo, we're hoping we can just add that back in for the same price. And then the last one is the power disconnect at the water treatment plant. There's the one wire they couldn't locate, so we're working with Olson Electric to just take care of that next spring, so that way, all the electrical is taken care of then. This month, we have three payoffs, Tan Construction, Pay Application Number 9, and then I would recommend approval of Pay Out 9 for $204,996.91.
Okay. Want to take action on that right away if we can. So moved. Okay, motion by Pillar.
Second.
Second by Hack. Discussion. Casey.
So then on this, I guess like water leak, can I guess where's this at?
What?
There were... So Jared was here last month, we had four or five of them.
So the one we just do over by?
The only one left is this fire hydrant over by West Dakota.
Yeah. And that was isolated to the fire hydrant, but if nothing else over to?
Fire department's been notified too that it's gonna be off for the winter, whatever.
So then there's still, then I guess like money yet? I mean, you did not pay them?
Yep.
In case, okay. They don't come back or something?
Yep.
Yeah, motion by Pillar. And a second by, who was it, second?
Hack.
No more discussion. Roll call.
Pillar.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Weidrich.
Aye.
Aye.
Just so you guys are aware, all three contractors have retained and held on them, so there's a couple remaining items. We started to lower it a little bit as the remaining items are very few. I think Tan has some ceding and restoration left, so we lowered theirs a little bit, but we still are holding some money from them. And then B&amp;G Electric, they submitted Pay Out 3, and this is for $26,866.33. I would recommend approval of that at this time as well.
So, motion by Weidrich. Second. Second by Stern.
Do they have any outstanding items?
Their only one is that light pole that was back ordered, so they just have to install the light pole at the tower site.
So the lights at the tower is the beacon light on the top of the thing, and then this is gonna be like a yard light?
Yep, just the light pole.
You have the discussion? All in favor say aye. What? Oh, sorry. Okay, with motion by Weidrich, second by Stern, more discussion? Roll call.
Weidrich.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Pillar.
Aye.
Obinower.
Aye.
Motion carried.
So B&amp;G will be done next spring once they get that pole in, and then we can release their retainage, substantial completion. DN Tanks, they submitted Pay Application Number 7, and this is for $17,648.18, and I would recommend approval of that as well.
So moved.
Motion by Hack.
Second.
Second by Weidrich. Discussion. Roll call.
Hack.
Aye.
Weidrich.
Aye.
Pillar.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Obinower.
Aye.
Motion carried.
DN Tanks, their remaining item is installing the fence around the tower site, and I talked to them today, and they had planned to do it Thursday, Friday, the storm. And now they're thinking about pulling off till next year on that one, just because trying to get to that site, they don't want to have to plow their way up there and rip anything up and then come back and have more punchless items. So they're hoping that it'd be all right if we just waited till next month on that one. Or next, spring, sorry. Maybe next month.
Are we opening the road yet?
We haven't yet, no.
So anybody have any heartburn with that's going in the spring?
I don't know on that. And the bar grant, so we had gotten, we're getting bids for sewer televising and cleaning. We received two so far, they do have a December 2nd cutoff, so we're hoping to get hopefully another three more, and then we'll bring that bid down next month. But we got two good ones so far. And then Alley Concrete Paving, that work's been complete, so I know Monty has received that in ways, but that work should be complete. Any questions on any of the work or quotes we're getting or anything?
I just have a question, on that leak that was on the water tower, now that's under dirt on that seam or whatever.
Yep.
So then I guess next year, even that's, you know, it's, then I can say burying the dirt, how are we gonna tell, I guess, if that's doing leaking or not?
So, we did the water pressure, the leak test, so it made it the three days, plus then, our three days until they backfilled, so I think it was about five or six days, and it didn't drop at all on that, and there was no visible leakage around the outside. So we did do pretty extensive testing on that just to make sure. The only other way would be to do another pressure test at the end or leakage test next year to check that. But we didn't have any concerns with it after we did the second leakage test.
So then... So then I guess, was there, I guess, was there any kind of, I guess, any kind of leakage on the outside then?
No.
It was fixed then?
Yeah, we made them actually dry off the whole outside before they did the test just to really make sure, so we got rid of all the wet spots around that, and then they redid it. So John specifically told them, "Dry it so we know that it's dry, and then we'll start it then."
Okay.
So they were all gone.
So if it leaks throughout the winter, or we, this spring when the ground does, we would, if it's still leaking, it's gonna be saturated?
Yeah, it'd be gone. It is underwater.
And if that's the case, then it's more easier. You know the questions? All right, thanks, man.
Yep.
Monty, what have we received for, for a, funds for?
We received another $500,000 this month.
Okay, all right. Makes it less puckerable when you hear that, maybe, we're getting money in, so. Thank you. All right, down to, we have, we have three permits and a hall, two permits and a hall rental. North Stars Hockey for 11 U travel baseball, I'm sorry, North Star Baseball for travel baseball. Free reduced hall rent for FCC LA from the school, and a local permit for figure skating club. We can either take these individually or one fell swoop if you like.
Make a motion to approve all three?
Motion by Weidrich.
Second.
Second by Hack, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. 7A, street cleaning snow removal ordinance revisions. Monty?
There was some discussion about our ordinance and the lack of penalty for those who deposited snow into the streets either before or after we were cleaning. So I researched several other municipalities' ordinances, came up with the, proposed the language here, that it shall be a violation of the ordinance for any person to place power to blow snow from any private property onto the city streets. It shall not apply to areas where there is no boulevard, specifically in the C1, the business district. Penalty will be a noncriminal infraction with a maximum fine of $500 as determined by the municipal judge.
So in the event of a violation, our police officers would then issue a citation to the individuals to appear in court?
Correct. Is any recommendations on anything else you would like to see in there?
So then on the businesses that are on its main street, so then in the boulevard that it runs?
They would be allowed. Yeah, they would be allowed to put their snow into the parking lane on Main Street under this proposed ordinance.
And then we, the city, would remove it from there?
Yep.
Well, one thing you should all be aware of is that our streets often don't really have a boulevard. For example, Central Avenue is a 90-foot wide platted street. The street itself is only about 60 feet wide, so the sidewalks are actually platted street. So you're only moving snow from street onto the street. You're not moving it from a boulevard. And we have many, many small lots like that, where the sidewalk might be on their private property, but wherever they move their snow to may not, you know, the city's gonna have to know where their boundaries are, the streets, before they can cite people. And they may also have to know who actually moved the snow. Unless you want to make it applicable just so the owner gets the citation, regardless of who moves the snow, because a lot of people hire other people who can't move it themselves.
I think the biggest concern with this patch is people moving their snow from the driveway out into the street. Not so much when we have the big snows, but I know like over on Expansion where I live, all those townhouses over there shovel their driveways when there's two inches of snow, push it out into the street, and then we don't plow it two inches. Then the street gets extremely rough because it packs down into ice chunks, basically. I think that's where most of it's coming from, not so much sidewalks, but people pushing their snow from the driveway out into the street.
Well, I don't disagree with the policy that you guys are talking about since most every city has something similar. Just want to make you aware of some special situations we have here.
Is it actually still considered street? I was told that for finding lots and what is street and what is boulevard to take the platted street less what is actual street, then that other area between the curb and the property line is actually considered boulevard.
It can be.
Okay.
Yeah, there are several different legal definitions of boulevard.
Okay. If I can... Trying to figure out how to proceed, I can visit with Pat a little bit about ways that we can address his questions in there, or?
It's gonna be a discretionary ordinance, like a lot of ours.
Like a lot of them, yeah.
Yeah. Because are we gonna address our city parking lots in this ordinance as well? Or?
No, because that's actually under a different ordinance. That's under the Parking, Traffic and Offenses Ordinance. I guess I would recommend that we take a look at a lot of these ordinances rather than just addressing everyone as they come up. I know Tammy's made notes on probably 20 or 30 different ordinances that are affected by North Dakota Century Code that should be changed, so I may want to consider, you know, as portfolio holders, I can meet with anybody as to what your portfolio covers and then go through and say, "We're changing, if we're updating ordinance, then we're updating all of them."
Makes sense.
That's a good idea. And then, does that also tie up vehicles parked in the roadway and plowed around them, or?
Yeah. Well, our ordinance does cover that now, as far as that goes, but...
Right. So are we changing the fine on that, though? That's my question. Because right now, it's $20, it's after, we've been giving them a warning. If they don't remove after the warning, then it's a $20 fine, correct?
Yep. If the parking ordinances have been suspended because of a snow emergency, it is a $20 fine, otherwise it is a $5 ticket. But it can be a $5 ticket every day that the vehicle is still there. Or a $20 ticket if the parking ordinances have been suspended. Because the ordinance does say that each day constitutes a separate offense.
Okay. Now, we did not declare a snow emergency.
Sure.
Correct. Okay, all right. Well, I like, I do like this, the penalty that you showed on here for the 500 first. But I don't know if you want to see some more options for, for moving forward?
Well, you know, what else if you just say that you can't move, I guess, the snow in the street? And the only place that I can is just in this main street from, you know, I mean, like here to there, you know?
Yeah.
Or something like that, maybe?
That's, in effect, what that said, yeah. I was confused by that last sentence, but after your explanation, it made more sense.
Pretty much what it's saying is just basically this scene, the commercial one district is all the downtown district, as you can see on the map.
Sure. Okay, we want to move forward with this language?
Jerry, you have to wait till the very end, or can I interject at any point?
For the ordinance?
Yeah. You have to wait till public comments?
Yeah, what's your comment?
I think 500's a little extreme.
It's up to.
It's a low two.
Up to.
Okay.
So the first, the first one could be 50. Second could be 200.
So if you've got a repeat offender out there and they're building snow pads in the middle of the street.
And you know that you have little increments, I thought you were gonna jump right up to... Not that I hope you ever be a... Okay, thank you, it's fine.
You bet, no problem.
So action, if we do any action tonight, it would be a first reading?
Correct. I'll make a motion to approve the updated ordinance as presented.
The motion by Weidrich. And this is the first, would be the first reading?
I'll second that.
Second by Pillar. Discussion. Casey.
So then on the C, on the C then on this one, I guess like zoning, is that just Main Street that's just stolen that way?
Yeah, it goes basically from 4th down Main, and then it goes up one block, north and south of Main, as far as where, where, if they don't have a boulevard, they would be allowed to put it into the parking lane.
Yeah.
And everything else is C2 or C Street.
Okay.
And so we would have opportunity, excuse me, between now and our next meeting, and this, this will be publicized, so people will have opportunity to respond to this and make any suggestions and stuff like that, and we could address that before we proceed past a second reading if there's need for any change, correct?
Yep.
Wanting to see one run all the way out to where, to the west?
Basically, we will end. Basically, in at Fifth Avenue where the old dyke used to be.
At the welding shop, though?
At the welding shop, yeah. And I see from that, it's going to come up two blocks on the north side, and come this outside.
Any more discussion? Okay, we have motion that is second. Roll call.
Weidrich.
Aye.
Pillar.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Obinower.
Aye.
So at the next meeting, we'll have the, either revisions or the second, or the second reading. All right, 8A, moving permit, Colter Langberg. Pull that up here. Monty, anything we need to know here?
Well, Colter is here, be moving it on to the south half of the two lots he owns in North Star. Pictures of the trailer are facing the wrong direction. And it's a 1995 Monavilla 16 by 80, and will include the attached entry, entryway, and a shed. A storage type shed.
Is there a picture of the shed?
No.
Colter, a picture of the shed?
I don't, it's like a barn style with a gable roof on it. I'd say it's 12 by 16, but I don't have the exact measurements on that yet.
Is that new or used, or?
Is it new, or?
The shed, is that something you're buying new, like from Northland Sheds, or?
It's used, it comes, it's on the lot with the trailer, but I'll be moving it as well. But it's in good.
Is it, is it sided with the same kind of siding that's on the?
I don't think it's the same siding, but it's the same color.
Okay.
Do we have any questions or concerns?
So just for perspective, you said on the south side of the two lots, so is here facing the two pads where your park cars, it'd be?
Kind of where the?
Where that, where that bottom trailer is?
Try and have that on right, Colter, if you can see that? It's where the south trailer used to be?
Exact, yeah, right where, because I still got the anchors in the ground there, so I'm gonna try and use the same anchors.
Colter, this trailer's in bad down right now?
Correct.
Anybody have any questions?
You're looking to do this in the spring, or hoping the snow melts to fill?
Well, sometime within the next six months, I'd say.
Okay.
I guess I have a concern, Colter, and I'm gonna be honest, I'm nervous about you putting something on there that's gonna look like crap. I know this trailer looks very nice. I hope you're gonna skirt it?
Yeah, I plan on doing a new, a new roof, probably a, you know, steel roof. I mean, it's got...
Does the roof's in bad shape on this one?
Well, no, it's got shingles on it, but after you move them, you know, it's probably hard on them. So rather than do a shingle roof, I think maybe steel roof would look nice.
Okay. I would like to put some conditions on this, I guess. That when it does get put in place, that it is in a certain timeframe, that it does look the way Colter's showing it, the way it's going to. I, I, history speaks for itself, that's all.
Right.
And that's why you're here, obviously.
Yeah.
And I'm just nervous, and I'm looking out for the rest of the neighborhood as well. Obviously, you have some neighbors here too, that I've not talked to. But if I was in the neighborhood, I'd be worried about what's coming in, so I'd like the pictures to look great, and I hope that's how you set it up.
Yeah, that's the plan. I don't, I don't have to move contracted out, but waiting to hear back from the clients, and they're gonna give me their quote, and...
So that's, that's the actual home in the pictures, correct?
Yes. And as soon as it gets set, I'll get it skirted in a timely fashion, and...
I guess that would be one of my conditions, what the timely fashion would be. You know, we could put like, once it's in there, it's skirted and set up, then six months, three months, one year, five years. I don't want to, you know, what, it's kind of like, oh, I'm feeling, I don't know what everybody else thinks, but that's... Do you have plans for anything else on the property right now, Colter?
You know, other than getting it cleaned up and getting ready to move, you know, that on roof. And a lot of, we always hear they get the shed in there as well, a lot of the debris and whatnot, we're gonna have to get cleaned up, and I just want to have a nice living piece of property.
So do we?
I imagine everybody else does.
Absolutely, absolutely. Pat, is it okay to put conditions on, on this? Can we do that?
Well, you did on one up by the?
True.
Barber shop.
We did, we did do that before, you're right. So what are, anybody, any thoughts from the board?
Casey. So I mean, I think it's, you know, you know, it looks good, everything, you know? I don't see, I guess, a problem, it's what the, you know, even if you move it in, you know, it's not, I guess, you know, not, I mean, I guess, you know, in good shape, you know? And then, then I mean, I guess we gotta go down the same kind of road, I guess we did before, so I...
Sure. Austin, your question?
Yeah, just a question for you, Colter.
Yeah.
The, the people that are gonna contract to move it, will, will they do that? Would they do that, like?
Will it skirt it?
Yeah, like when you buy it, if they're gonna contract to move it, will they take the skirting off and throw my water and move it, or you gotta do all that?
I'm going down there to pull the skirting off, and then they'll, as far as taking the entryway out there, doing that. And then they'll reattach it once it gets set, and then I'll be putting the skirting back on after everything gets set, and then hook it up.
I'm just curious, I didn't know maybe the mover would do it all, or?
I mean, they can, it just costs more, you know?
Okay. Any other questions or thoughts from the board?
If we were to put a stipulation on there for having it all connected up and skirted and stuff like that, I'm trying to recall what, what we had put on that other one over by the barber shop. Do you recall?
Around Steve's. On the sale was about eight months, I thought, six months, six months.
That was, that was siding and painting and all of that kind of stuff. Here, we're just talking about skirting, so. I, I would, I would think a, a month. Does a month seem reasonable too, to get the skirting back on once it's?
Once it's moved in and set?
Moved in?
A month's not unreasonable at all.
Okay.
All right.
Is there anything else that you would think would need to be built into that?
I don't think so.
To me, like, like Casey, I'm looking at the picture, that's, that's an attractive home. Much better than the other one you have. So I think this, I mean, you throw the skirting on there, arguably it would look just like, just like the pictures, so.
Yeah, I think the, the one month is fine and, and like Casey said, if it's, doesn't we go down the road we did before and so? Which we don't wanna do that, Colter, sorry, neither do I either, so. We put the one month then, so we'll make that, we can make that part of the motion until we approve the, the building permit. Moving permit, yes, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the moving permit with the stipulation that all skirting and hookups be in place within a month of its arrival on the property.
Motion by Weider. Second by Weider. Discussion.
One thing I have, Dan said hookups. There's an issue with electrical contractors too. So it might take longer than a month to get an electrician there to hook up the electricity to that place too.
Well, I guess I would, I would respond back to that is if, if this is gonna be six months out, I would hope that you would plan ahead and not wait until you're rolling into the lot and then calling Joe Electrician. Fair enough, right?
Right, I'll get taken care of.
Okay, we have a motion in the second, any more discussion? Roll call.
Taylor.
Aye.
Weider.
Aye.
Pat.
No.
Stern.
Aye.
Omenor.
Aye, motion carried.
Good luck. All right, reports, water sewer.
Well, we, we heard most of the, the report. We have been having some discussion with regard to some of the lines that we have recently had pace in town to, to visualize and we do have a line over by the Senex service station there where we had put a cleanout about halfway down the, the street. We had been experiencing sentiment and stuff coming from the car wash and we had the bottom of the first manhole there redone. And that has proven to be a good thing in one regard. But what we have found is that it now provides a, a cleaner path to take the sediment further down the line. And in the course of our visualization on that line, we found that we have quite a bit of sediment that, that got to the point where they couldn't continue with the cameras. So probably come springtime, we'll, we'll be doing a, a full flush of that line and we'll be watching on that and Jerry and I will be setting up some discussions with Paul Dahl with regard to the, the car wash and, and things of that nature there. So that's kind of a work in progress on that. And then we did find through the visualization, some other opportunities on some of our lines where we've got some hairline cracks and whatnot. So I'll be working with Dave and the water crew and, and with Moore Engineering to see what adventures lie ahead as it relates to that. And as was mentioned by Moore, we, we will continue to go down the path about doing visualization on some of the other lines, hopefully with grant money.
Is that sediment before or after that cleanout?
Excuse me?
Is that sediment before or after that cleanout? Pretty much the whole run?
Yeah, we, we went, we went all the way down, so we went past that, that cleanout. But it's, I think what we're going to do is we're gonna hydrojet that, that line completely, get air to where it's wide open and then hopefully we can use that cleanout that we put into place to, to help us in the future, that and maybe some work over at Senex itself. That's all I have for tonight, thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Streets, cemetery.
Well, as we all know, we had a overabundance of snow last couple of weeks. We went a different route. We had, a few of our guys wanted to try something different and there's nothing saying they can't do that. In my opinion, it's a trial by error, okay? We got streets cleaned off and passable within twenty-four hours. The plan was to go curb to curb. We are back at the drawing board with some of those streets. We didn't go curb to curb that, we understand that. But now we're at a point where we don't have lumpy bumpy streets, number one, I don't know, set right away. Other than where we had to wind rope by the school, Main Street, the fingers, you know, block north of Main, et cetera. We now have the ability, once we're in place, we can take a section of town, bring it from the curb, blow it, haul it out, same day. I've been in my section of town, we've had a windrow intersection of town for up to two weeks on just my street road before in the middle. We've had big windrows, we've had small ones. Small windrows, I was young once, I liked to blow through windrows in my hometown. Costs money, every time we, we windrow, that costs money, labor, fuel costs. A few people I talked to in town, there's yays and nays. A lot of people, I was surprised that they didn't realize that our snowboard ran independent from our payloader on diesel. I've helped out with snow moves, I know how that thing runs and in an eight hour day, you could fill it up anywhere from four to eight times in a day. Fuel prices aren't the greatest right now. The guys just wanted to try a little bit of trial and error. Again, we're tweaking it, I understand that it's not perfect, nothing's perfect, nobody's perfect. But I was pleased to hear some of our streets were better than other communities. In the short amount of time, we got, what, seventeen, eighteen inches of snow. I'm happy to live where we live, I'm proud of our street crew. Are we shorthanded, two guys? Yes. But we also got to take into effect, three days a week, we do garbage that pulls three guys off a snow crew. That's another trial and error. Is it how we're gonna do it forever? Don't know yet. And we talked about before the meeting, we're gonna go up by the school where the windrow is sloppy. Anybody get a chance, drive up there before tomorrow morning and then drive on your street, see what you think. But we are gonna clean that off. Again, is it the right thing?
Jason, I just got back into Hazen and the first thing I did was drive around knowing that Hazen had received the abundance of snow. And, and I personally was, was quite impressed. You know, I, I had heard that you guys were going to, to try this out and so I was very curious and, and I thought it was great. The only, the only thing that I noticed at, at some intersections, it seemed, you know, going from curb to curb at the, at the corners, it seemed to pile up a little on the corners and for, for people that have lower vehicles, that, you know, that might be something that as we continue forward experimenting, maybe take a closer look at, at the, the intersection spots like that. But, but by and large, I thought, I thought it looked very, very good. And I, I told Jerry, before I came in today, I received two calls at my home from citizens saying, I know you guys have a meeting tonight and I just want to share with you that we are extremely pleased with, with the snow removal, particular to their streets. They were, they were talking about their streets and they said, we thought it was great after the first loop through and then the city folks came through again and did some cleanup and stuff in there and made it even better than it was to, to begin with, so. Again, you know, look, those guys, you're never gonna make everybody happy with any type of snow removal plan that you put into place, but it was quite evident that they, they put a lot of effort into it and kudos to them for trying something a little bit different and seeing how that works out. Thank you.
I mean, myself as a citizen, does it stink that I have to blow my windrow at the end of my driveway? Yeah. But I got out and I did it and if you drive by the house now, it wasn't because, I'm one of the city commissioners, because it went out and I blew my windrow into, into neighbors' lawns in my front lawn, so. I get it, I understand. Again, the plan is not to leave this windrow by the curbs. If I'm wrong, Dave, we get a chance, we get some downtime, we're gonna, some areas, we're gonna pull that. We're gonna pull everyone, we're not gonna pull an empty lot and blow the curb. Why would we do that? As far as I'm concerned, my street where I live on, I'd leave it, honestly. Do I understand that we've got rolling curbs up in, in North Star One? And we don't really have a boulevard? Yep. Do we have snow remnants between our side, our sidewalk and the street? Yep. But again, I'm not trying to compare our city compared to a Bismarck, but I'm damn proud to live in Hazen and how we move snow, so.
Well, I know what, all right, tonight.
No, go ahead.
One of the things is to save money and time as well and, you know, depending on what Mother Nature and the Lord gives us throughout the rest of the winters and determine if we do have to, you know, continue to go to the curb and I'm assuming throughout this winter, we're gonna continue to go to the curb. It's kind of our plan. Or we have to pull away certain spots that you said, maybe, but we'll see what happens. We get three, four, or five of these events, so we just had a sixteen, fifteen to seventeen inches. It may change our attitude, but I'm pretty sure I'm on speed dial for most of the community and I had a lot of phone calls, good and bad. And, you know, one of the things, today I got a call from Mark Washington. He said, I use his name, Mark drives ambulance and one of his big, big concerns is, you know, when they get an ambulance call and there's a, there's a drift this tall in front of the driveway, how the ambulance is gonna get in there? And Mark did say, you know, he, he talked about that he knows that was seventeen inches and that was, you know, every time we plow to the side, it's not gonna be this tall, you know. It could be this tall, you know, it, you know, it could be a foot high. But I did tell him that, you know, that is, that's, that's a valid concern. You know, if we have an issue that we know about, can we get a plow out there? Absolutely, we probably can get a plow to help get into someone's driveway if we had to. Here Buffalo, New York, didn't expect to get seven feet and I'm sure they're, they're, they're making do as well, but there's definitely pros and cons. I've been on the board for twelve or thirteen years now and every year, we get a lot of complaints about bringing it to the middle of the road all around town, every year, many complaints. And that's another reason why we decided to change. We're, let's give it a try, let's listen to the community and see if we try it. And I think every phone call I got that was upset about the snow removal, they all claimed that they liked when we burned it to the middle of the road, which I think were very fickle and we, you know, I don't, I don't, didn't argue with anybody, but it is what it is, we're not gonna please everybody. Our roads are in great shape. I've been in quite a few communities in last week and a half and our roads are in wonderful shape. I appreciate the efforts our guys have given. I would love, it would be great if we had some historical data on seventeen inch snowfall that we had in the past and how much time, energy, fuel, overtime, anything else we use, but we, it's kind of hard to compare. You can't really compare apples to apples, but, you know, getting the snow gate would not have helped with this, with this amount of snow. To, you know, in the snow gate, you put down in front of driveways and it doesn't burn it up in front of driveways. But it's only good for less than twelve inches, so that's a lot of money.
Less than six.
Less than six, okay.
Yeah, the only thing is theirs at all, six inches or more, they don't work.
Well.
With that ambulance thing, this spring, there was an ambulance called during that blizzard. Right away, they knew they were gonna have issues, so they did page out fire and rescue.
Yeah, Mark told me that, yeah.
And we did go over and help. We basically shoveled their entire driveway for them to try to get that patient out of the home. So there's always that option, we've always told the ambulance, even if they think they're gonna need us to pay just well in advance. We'll come shovel the entire berm off to get that person out of the home if we have to.
We've, we've got guys that are, a guy on call for that particular instance too. Then you can get plowed out of town or in town or whatever, so. I feel the calls probably not as many as Jerry. Jerry and I have been talking for the last two weeks quite often. I, I get it, I'm not opposed to trying something new. If the guys come to me and say, hey, can we try something new? I'm not gonna, we, we've got adults, competent adults working for us and they were going to give it a shot. They're, they're respecting, trying to save costs where we can, you know, so I commend them and we're just, we're, we're gonna play it by ear, so.
But we're gonna continue to push to the sides.
Yeah.
That's our win, yeah. All right, finance, busing, library.
I'm good.
Police, fire.
I got a couple of things here. So we're down to one patrol vehicle right now. One got hurt this weekend. So we're at Hazen Motors, we're not exactly sure what's wrong with it and it is the old one, but it could be up to a four thousand dollar fix. They're not sure if it's just cam shop went out or if it's a broad issue, but they're gonna get it in, tear the hat off and take a look and let us know, I guess. A lot of money for that old one, but I guess we'll see what happens with that one. And then with the fire department, I know Corey Geary wanted me to talk to you guys, he's got a call for a building addition on, on to our building, but I asked him if he'd come. He could make this meeting, but he's trying to make the next, next one and present it to you guys to give you guys a heads up that he possibly is gonna be here next weekend or next meeting. That's all I got, Ken. With the vehicles on the side of the street, I had Jim go around and give twenty-four hour warnings. There was seven cars that he did tag with a twenty-four hour warning that had not been moved. Actually, it was a couple of days after we went around initially to plow and they still weren't moved. And I had him only tag the ones that were still there from the initial snowstorm. He tagged seven of them, all but three of them were moved, so they did get parking tickets. And there's currently still one that is not moved, but the warning's not on the vehicle anymore and the ticket's not in the vehicle anymore. So we kind of talked about what to do with it, where to tow it to, talked to Jerry about it. We, I did talk, called Terry Turnus, we are allowed to take it out to the landfill and still we're out there.
In the fenced area?
Not in the fenced area.
Okay.
That is reserved for high priority vehicles. So it'd be outside the fence, still inside the landfill fence. But after talking to Jim, he didn't really like that idea because there has been thefts out there of vehicles before. And Terry did say that there is cameras out there watching it now, but I don't think we'll end up towing a whole lot of vehicles due to this situation. I don't know if Dave would be okay if we put one or two in his fence there.
At least we have room for up to four or five.
I don't think it'll be a whole lot, like right now, there's still only one vehicle that isn't moved. Like, right now, there's still only one vehicle that isn't moved. I guess if we get more than Dave is comfortable with, then we can go out to the landfill with them and take our chances out there. Other thing Turnus did say is we could get the boots, purchase our own boots, and then we can, don't have to be in a fenced area, we can park them on any city lot and, I don't know if I like that idea either. Seems like a lot of extra work for the police department and possibly a bigger liability. Plus those boots for the grid one are upwards of $1,000 a boot, so. I think our best bet right now is just to, if we do have to tow, tow to Dave's lot, work with Dave.
So either the vehicle owner took the ticket and stick her off into the home or blew away in the wind?
Well, it's the second time. So I'm thinking somebody's taken it off, because the 24-hour notice was gone before Jim wrote the actual ticket and put it on there. Now the ticket's also gone. He did run the plates and it is registered to a person that has a mine on address. I'm not sure who's taking it off, but I don't know, somebody possibly lives with, is taking them off, but doesn't have keys to the vehicle, not really sure. I did talk to Jimmy about this to show me before I came here, and he did say that Jesse possibly knows who owns the vehicle and he was gonna try to get a hold of them. So they're gonna take that avenue tonight and I guess if we can't get a hold of them this evening, we're gonna call the tow truck in the morning.
All right, and we'll take, it could be a city truck.
It could be a city truck, yep. That's all I have.
Okay. All right, then no buster tonight. All right, that takes us down to 13, public comments.
I got one. I was just gonna say, I agree with Jason, you had decorateable snow, where you guys' windrow on the side, it is definitely smoother than for the middle. Up in our neighborhood, the windrow got left a long ways away from the sidewalk, which I understand.
Mistake.
Was, you know, they're busy, they blew the roads open, I know they're doing it with the can, but by the time they got back, you know, half of us had that berm taken care of already. Then it made it really hard for them to push the rest of it back. And then the only other concern I have with that is like up there by Colker's Place, that corner usually blows in pretty good, you know, now there's a bigger pile there, so we start getting multiple blizzards, you know, kind of stacked up that might make it really bad. You know, where some of them piles end up getting pretty big. I don't know if you guys have a plan for that or not.
We're planning on removing some of them piles, and it was a learning curve where the sidewalks are right at the street.
Yep.
We didn't want to bury them, and we did stay a little farther away than we really needed to, but we've had some good discussions at the shop here about next go around, how to maybe deal with some of that or whatever with the sidewalks that are right on the street or whatever. Our next attempt, is it gonna be better, maybe we'll be a little too far the other direction, but we're gonna try something a little bit different.
And I understand you don't wanna start catching that sidewalk.
Yeah, we don't wanna bury the sidewalks, because there is people that do shovel them or wanna keep that part of their sidewalk moving, but.
Yeah. My sidewalk is tricky, just know I don't.
So we're having some discussion about what we're gonna do next time, but we're gonna work on some of the intersections, corners, you know, some of the piles are high, but.
Thanks, Austin.
Do we have an expectation of homeowners to have the sidewalks clear? I don't know, is that built into anything?
It's in the ordinance, but I, like you said, I've got three feet on my, part of it's from my own driveway, part of it's from the city's streets, so I, I don't, find me. I don't know what to do.
But it's partially my own problem, such a big driveway, that berm being like the width of a vehicle or more away from the road, they had to blow that snow quite a bit to get, you know.
Yeah, one of the mistakes we did make is we didn't take it close enough to the curb the first round, so we're learning.
I do agree the road's definitely smoother.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Oh, Nancy.
Okay, I have three items, so I'm Nancy Evenoff, and I wanna thank all the commissioners for being here and all the hard work you guys have done in the city. I'm really impressed, just kinda digress, of the work you guys have been doing with improving our parks and rec parks, you know, it's looking really nice. So I really like that and I kind of read on the plan and stuff. So I just kinda wanna thank you guys because you're really making Hazen look pretty spiffy, you know? A lot of people do use the parks, and I wanna thank Dave and his crew for, even though we've had all this snow, for at least trying to do our walkway through the park area, because a lot of people walk, you know, from the Hazen Golf Course all the way through town and walk the dogs. So even though you might not thank anybody's out there, a lot of people do use it, but I really thank you for keeping that open. Now, if we could just do that with my driveway, that'd be really cool. And that was kind of my concern, was I don't have a large area in my front yard, but I have a tiny little area of bollard between my driveway and the fire hydrant. So eventually, it's gonna get so high, I'm not sure where it's gonna go, because we really don't have anything to the north side, I mean, because my driveway takes it up, except for my neighbors and a poor tree. So that kind of takes, took the brunt of it. And then I had to have a front end loader come up and move my snow because it was so chunky monkey that even Hercules couldn't bust it through there. So I don't know, unless you guys have a skidster for sale, I think I'm gonna need one if we're gonna put some snow to the side, or if I know in advance and I can kind of get out there when the city goes by and kind of move that snow and it's not so cemented. And there's a lot of people too that I'm kind of concerned about that are LDA and may not have the equipment or people to help them. So I'm hoping our community will kind of come together and help each other, because it, you know, we can't always rely on the city to do everything for us. And I know that it's nice that they did try to do something different and we're all kind of didn't know about it. So that kind of leads me into the new app. Thanks for putting that new Hazen app out, greatly appreciate that. A few suggestions, I'm not sure who, just a few things that would make it easier to navigate or to find the information. I'm not sure who I could visit with in my suggestions, but one of the big ones is the alert and the updates, because I had no idea that you guys were gonna come and plow it to the side, so I waited for two days, thinking, you know, here come the boys with the front loader and would take that berm away. Well, by then it kind of set up. So if I kind of know in advance, and now I know that you guys are gonna do that, maybe I can get out there and push that somewhere, but what happens when I start running out of room? Because I can only go so high.
And you heard, we, there will be areas where we're gonna try to take that off.
Okay.
Not the entire town, but.
Right. So I don't know, I know you guys are working on kind of revising the plan and working with it, and so I appreciate all the work that was done, because it was kind of about, oh...
And there could be a chance that your bollard will be six feet tall of snow.
Right, but if I can't lift it.
By the boll, not by.
Yeah, well, to clear my sidewalk, if I fill up on both sides of what I can, anybody have any suggestions, you know, any basketball players that could come over and hire for And then another safety concern is that when the staff is operating machinery, there would be kindly advised for safety that they were aware of their situation. I think you're all aware of what I have presented to you earlier. I think they were, and I feel a little targeted, but I'm gonna let that kind of go, because I wanna make this a really great community and I think that we are, hopefully our citizens will group together and help each other, dig each other out and not be selfish, to just do their own little spot and put away their little machine. Help somebody that doesn't have a machine or go up the block and do the whole sidewalk for somebody. You know, it's good karma. You know, and I have some neighbors that pitch in and I have some neighbors that don't, and I'm sure that's true all the way around, but we really need each other, you know, as a community. And we're a small community, really. I mean, I think I read 2,500 households, about 2,000 households. I think we can do better, I really do. I love living here because it is a small community, and there are great businesses that will stay late or go the extra mile for you, or, you know, people will be open and willing to listen and doesn't require a meeting sometimes to nibble on somebody who's eager about a new idea. So that's the beauty of living here, and I'd really like to keep Hazen progressing, like our parks and recs and our city areas and stuff that we're doing, and our renovation of the downtown and, you know, those are really important things to keep our community active and, and I think working together. You know, the more that you get out and you meet your neighbor, you meet your people, you're maybe a little bit more willing to go over and help them. Because I know I would welcome to help.
Appreciate your comments, Nancy, thank you.
So I think that's all I have. Oh, the TV antenna, Monty, anything on that new pole someday?
Yeah, I was working with Rough Rider Electric to, about getting a new pole up there for that antenna, but obviously it's gonna be a little interesting now to get off on a prairie trail and get up there and put a pole in, but I'll keep working with Rough Rider.
So the possibility could be just spring.
I say it might be spring.
Unless we get a nice melt.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, and then another thing is who do we, if I, because if I go to my app, the Hazen app, and I look up.
Stop in the office and check with the jam, probably.
Well, like on the busing site, it didn't say that it followed the school schedule, I don't remember any of the things, but I wish it would. But like, what happens if it's an emergency of like your water breaks? Who do we call? Because there's no, nothing on the app of who do I call after hours? Do I call 911?
No, call City Hall, just leave a message there.
But what if it's on Friday or Saturday?
You know, the app is new, we're still building it and.
I like it.
Taking advice and community input, so appreciate that.
I do, I really like it, because if you don't have internet or you don't have access right away, you can go to your cell phone. And so I think, thank you for listening and being open-minded, and thank you Dave with your street crew and.
Thanks.
All right?
All right.
Thank you for that.
Absolutely, thank you. Takes us down to approval of bills. Mr. Mike Waitrak? Second by hack, discussion. It's on the list that Monty has, a couple of items here.
And 270,000, that's your fee.
Yeah, all right. Okay. Now I'll take motion to approve it.
You got it.
I do, don't I? Roll call.
Waitrak?
Aye.
Hack?
Aye.
Hiller?
Aye.
Stern?
Aye.
O'Benauer?
Aye.
Motion carried. Me, Jerry, thanks. Thank you all for being here.